...a petition filed by Vermont Solar Farmers LLC requesting a certificate of public good for authorization to construct the Bondville Solar Farm, which consists of a solar electric generating facility of up to 2.2 megawatts, to be located off Gleason Hill Road at 219 Vermont Route 30 here in Bondville, Vermont. My name is Lynn Fabrizio. I'm a staff attorney with the Public Service Board, and the Board has appointed me as hearing officer for this case. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to provide an opportunity to hear input from the public regarding the petition. Excuse me. The comments received at this hearing will become part of the public record in this docket. In addition to providing comments at the hearing tonight, you may send the Board comments in writing by email or by letter. I've handed out a handout that includes contact information for those purposes. Excuse me. Tonight's hearing will be transcribed by a court reporter. This transcript, along with all other comments received by the Board, become part of the public file so that Board members, staff, and participants in the case can consider the comments. Although public comments do not become part of the formal evidentiary record in the case, they are especially helpful in raising issues or offering perspectives that the Board might otherwise not be aware of. So we look forward to hearing your input. The transcript will be available on the Board's website, psp.vermont.gov. Tonight, we have representatives from the petitioner, the Vermont Solar Farmers, and from the Vermont Department of Public Service. I've invited representatives from each to give very brief, interesting comments on the project itself and on the Board's role -- sorry, the Department's role in this proceeding.
Do you have some water?
No, I've got a cough drop going on. Pretty soon, I'll stop the talking and hear them.
We do have water, I think, in the refrigerator for anybody that's gonna need some if they're gonna dry up.
Got a little puddles of water.
If there's anyone in the audience who thinks that they might like to provide comments, once we get going, please sign up on the sheet. And even if you haven't had a chance to sign up, just please speak your name clearly and spell it out for the court reporter. It's benefit. Okay. Phil Vermont Solar Farmers, would you like to give a brief description of the project?
Well, I'm William Jerome, and wanted to introduce Danny Shangala. Danny is with Downs, Rattlin', Martin, our legal counsel, so presumably Danny will just wave a flag if anybody says anything on this site that we're not supposed to. Josh Wiley with me, Brian Reagan, all members of Vermont Solar Farmers. And since the last time we were here, Josh and Brian weren't, but Bill Wiley was, and I thank you all for coming. And I talked at length about the 10 criteria of Act 248 and what was involved and what we were trying to do with the project. But since we're just making a brief presentation, I'm very happy to turn this over to the youth component and, as you, Josh, just give us a little overview of what's going on.
Well, as Lynn said in her opening, it's a 2.2-megawatt photovoltaic electric generating facility, and it's located up Gleason Hill Road on a roughly 20-acre parcel. We'll be doing some clearing, roughly about 15 acres, and putting up our electric panels. We will have to improve the discontinued road, and we will be connecting to the Green Mountain Powers grid at the bottom. There's a three-phase line there. There's copies of our petition available downstairs for anybody that wants to look at any of the plans, as well as our office with all the facts and details of the project. And we're just excited to get into the solar world. As you've seen across the state, there are solar farms popping up everywhere, and our goal was really to try to pick a site that wasn't directly visible by everybody. We wanted a place that was sort of hidden, and we thought we really succeeded when we found this 20-acre piece. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Elias, would you like to...
Yeah, I think I should stand up so people can see me, but I didn't go out in the woods today, so I'm not dressed up as I might be, but I don't think anybody here is gonna fault me for that. So my name is Jeannie Elias. I'm a lawyer with the Department of Public Service. Ms. Fabrizio is with the Public Service Board. They act like the court in making the decision on the application of the petitioners. We work for different entities in the state of Vermont. The entity that I work with, along with my colleague and soon-to-be-Vermont lawyer, Jeannie Oliver, we are a party to every case that goes before that tribunal, and we represent the public. But when I say "public," I mean all the public. We represent the companies in Vermont who want to put up solar installations. We represent the people at large. We represent Vermont ratepayers who have an interest in how much electricity costs, and we represent all Vermonters who are interested in having renewable energy. And a broader swath than that, but just to give you the idea, when I say "public," that doesn't mean that I can represent you individually in this proceeding. That is not the role of the Department. We try to listen to all the interests of all the kinds of public that are out there and look at the statutory legal criterias that the Board has to use to decide whether this project passes the tests and should be given a permit to be built. The Department, along with a couple of other state agencies -- we are kind of like an agency, even though we're called a Department -- has different areas that we're supposed to look at. So the Department of Public Service looks at system stability and reliability of the electrical system. What will this project that's gonna create electricity do to the grid? Is it going to cause a problem? We don't want that to happen. Vermonters need their lights to stay on. So we examine the engineering, electrical engineering of a project with our staff engineers to see how it stacks up. We also look at aesthetics of a project under a long-established standard that is also used in Act 250 to determine the impacts of a project on the aesthetics. And the Agency for Natural Resources, who is involved in this case with an attorney who isn't here tonight, looks at the environmental impacts of the projects, how are streams impacted in forests and other plants. The State Historic Preservation Office looks at archaeological interests and historical buildings. So a variety of state agencies and our Department look at the various criterias, evaluate the project based on those statutory criteria, and make recommendations to the Board. And so that's our job, and that's what we're here for tonight. One of the things that Hearing Officer Fabrizio said earlier that's very important is, we don't live here. We don't know what the interests of the community are. We don't know the facts of the area. So hearing what the public has to say about the project, but did you know that at that spot, back in whatever the Indians were here? Well, now that would be something that the State Historic Preservation Office should be aware of and evaluate, et cetera, et cetera. But there's very important public input to be gained both tonight, either through making comments here, or submitting them later in writing or through an email to the Public Service Board. You can also contact me, and I have a few business cards here, but again, it's important that you understand that I don't represent any individual and I can't represent you. What I would be doing is informing you about the process as it goes forward and also taking in your comments, but if you want to make them part of the public record in the case, you would have to write them down and send them to the Board. I'm not the court here. Ms. Fabrizio and the Public Service Board are the decision-makers. I'm just a party before the decision-maker that has a job to do. So I think that's about it. Like I say, I have a few business cards here. I like to make the Department available to explain the process because I can explain the process to you. I can tell you what happens at any point in time along the way so that you understand where we are on this long schedule that's on the back of this handout that Ms. Fabrizio made and explain any parts of the legal process that you might not understand. The one comment that I would make about this schedule that you see on the back of this that's important is the difference between making a public comment and being a party in this process. Being a party in this process requires you to file a motion to intervene, meaning, "I would like to be a party." In order to be a party, you have to present a reason under the Board rules why you qualify as a party, and the Board has to say, "Yes, you're an official party. You have the status, you have party status in Act 250 language." But a public comment can be made by anyone, but party status or intervenor status must be given by the Board and is not given to anyone. And those people have very different, those entities have very different roles. If you're a member of the public, you can find out what's happening, but you can't appear at a hearing and say anything after tonight. You can make comments, but when the case goes to court, as it were, in front of the Board and we have a technical hearing, you don't have the right to have your thoughts and information considered as evidence. So there's a seven-day window after tonight's public hearing during which you could intervene, and after that, if you don't intervene, you're a member of the public and you have the right to comment all along, but it's a little different than party status, and I want to make that clear because one of the things that the Department tries to make sure of is that the public understands its role and the ways in which it can have a voice in these proceedings. And that distinction between when you're a party and get to be notified of everything versus a member of the public is important, and sometimes I think people don't see that there's a big distinction between those roles.
So that's about it? Thank you. Okay. Now open the floor to comments from the public. Our first speaker is Mike Wilson.
Well, okay. So I had already written a letter to the PSB commenting on each of the 10 criteria. Not gonna bother going through all those things again. So specifically, I have some specific questions. Number one, right off the top, I've heard multiple answers to the same question from the Vermont Solar Farmers, so I just want to get one answer instead of two. Last time you were here, even though the application called for 2.2 megawatts, you were saying you were gonna make it 1.8 because of the vernal pool and putting up less things. So which is it, 2.2 or 1.8? Question number one. Okay. I also heard on the night of the previous presentation, two different answers to how you're gonna treat runoff water. Mr. Wiley, I believe, said they were gonna leave the stumps in place, and somebody else on the same panel said, "We're gonna grind the stumps below ground." It seemed to me that they weren't the same answer for whatever reason, right? And I'd like to know that answer. And the second thing, I think there were some misassumptions in the original presentation, and I heard again tonight about visibility from Route 30 or whatever. And I read the report of the guy who did the study, and there's a two-mile radius that he used, and Jeannie, to your comments, not living here, you don't understand that just outside the two-mile radius is West Ridge Road at the top of the mountain. It's actually 2.1 miles, just coincidentally, but have clear visibility to this 15- or 20-acre mirror that's gonna be shining back on it. It's one of the most expensive, the most expensive and highly taxed houses in town are in that corner, and those homeowners are constantly looking for a reason to appeal their assessment. And I don't doubt that there'll be some assessment appeals which have a negative effect on the town's income. And there was another misassumption from the previous presentation, which was the A&R report assumed that that lot hadn't been logged in 30 or so years, when in fact, at that meeting, they heard that there'd been multiple loggings of that since then. So the A&R conclusion that it was a depleted or whatever the word is, woodlot, was based on a misassumption. Has there been any correction based on the fact that it's only been 10 or fewer? Jeannie can probably tell you exactly how many years that... So does that in fact qualify for the same description? And I'm sure the A&R people were doing their job based on what they knew. I'm not questioning anybody's motives here, okay? And then the third thing was, I call answers that I never got, okay? And one of the questions I asked is, "What is it gonna cost per kilowatt hour to generate electricity at this solar farm?" Okay? My research has told me it'll be between 27 and 38 cents a kilowatt hour. It's a pretty high number. Because of the lack of the hours of sunshine, it's a fixed panel. It's not gonna follow the sun. It's kind of older technology, and that technology doesn't allow electricity to be stored so that in peak usage hours, I happen to be a Rate 11 user of electricity, so I know that I don't use heat between 4:30 and 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 and 8:30 at night or whatever it is. I mean, between 7:00 and 11:00 in the morning and 4:00 and 8:00 at night. A lot of the power that's gonna be generated is gonna be generated, is not gonna be generated during those peak hours, and there's no way to store that energy. So you're putting fairly expensive kilowatt hours into the system at times when it's needed even less. So I never got an answer of what is the cost per kilowatt hour estimate for the generation of that power on an annual basis.
Well, so, thank you, Mr. Wilson. Do you have more questions or comments?
I went down my list, I think.
Well, so we'll ultimately defer to Ms. Fabrizio and the hearing officer's decision on how to proceed here. The petitioner is happy to respond to questions as they relate to the petition as filed. However, I believe the purpose of the public hearing is to provide public comments. It's not a question-and-answer period for the petitioner, though they are willing to answer some questions. So ultimately, we'll defer to your decision on this, but...
I'm happy to have some interaction with questioners and petitioners if you feel comfortable feeling the questions, and this is not an opportunity to grill the petitioner on the merits of the petition, but it's certainly an opportunity to get questions answered to the extent that...
In order to write a logical, legitimate follow-up letter, there's unanswered questions.
Mr. Wilson, let me try the questions in order. When we were here in the fall, we were looking at 1.8 megawatts. The petition was filed as up to 2.2, which is the limits of the speed program. We're actually at 2.12, and it has to do with a couple of factors. One is approximately an additional 100 solar panels without changing the configuration or the original design of the project. The other is the increased efficiency of the panels. And there's always a little room to move, and numbers in the solar world do move, but at any rate. So we are at 2.12 based on the capacity of the project and the solar panels. In terms of, I don't remember a difference with what Bill Wiley was saying and what I was saying in terms of the stumping. The plan has been all along to flush-cut the stumps and grind them below the...
That's what I did hear you say. Wiley, I heard a different answer.
Well, wouldn't be the first time Bill and I have had... Yeah, at any rate, but that is the program. It's the plan, and it has to do with the design of the project where the posts are helically drilled, and it is a relatively new technique in solar world, but it's a lot more environmentally friendly. You don't have the pile driver up there pounding away trying to drive posts in the ground. You'll have natural soil, and you'll be in ledge, and the whole idea was to be consistent. And Brian Reagan, who is here, is really our technical person involved in the design of the project, and he'll correct me, or he may have a couple of things to add. In terms of the runoff, I don't know quite how to respond to that except to say that there has been fairly extensive engineering done by long-trail engineering in terms of check dams, what the ditching would be along the roads, ditching along the project, and it's anticipated that there would be little to no additional runoff from the project and maybe even not that, and I think that's gonna be an ongoing conversation. But at any rate, there is pretty detailed information on that, and I'm not sure if you were hearing different things at the original, the meeting before the planning commission in November. Was there a conflict?
It was a stuff question was the conflict.
Okay, so it wasn't really so much the engineering aspect of managing the runoff then?
I can't comment on it. I didn't see the engineering report, but I have a private truck on, you know, a few hundred feet below your site, so I have great concern over there.
Understood, and runoff is a great concern, not only of...
Not only above ground, but below ground.
Yep. Well, and also, the state of Vermont, as you know, is pretty aggressive when it comes to stormwater, and we do have a construction general permit for the project, which considers the site low-risk in terms of the actual disturbance because there will be minimal disturbance. We're not running bulldozers around grading the site, not opening up, and that's part of not removing stumps, what's called clearing and grubbing on, probably rather using the mulch as part of the absorption of the moisture and runoff and addition of the ditching. I really can't comment about the dates of the last logging because, as I understand it from different conversations with both neighbors, and I'm not including Jeannie McIntyre in this because I think, Jeannie, you've been pretty consistent, but there seems to be a difference in terms of what Frank Pinto has had done and what, I think it was a combination of Coleman's, perhaps it was early sale of different people on the product. Yeah, so I know it's a little rough up there, and all I can say is to the price per kilowatt is that it's a heck of a lot less than what you're talking about, but I'm cautioned that since that is part of a different procedure, I shouldn't get into that, but outside of water cooler, that's something we should probably talk about. Brian, is there anything you want to add? I mean, you heard what Mr. Wilson...
If you feel like it's the best move, just because it's an ongoing process and to not speak to the price, then we can tap right at the water cooler. Other than that, it sounds like you answered all the questions to your satisfaction?
He answered all the questions, I still think.
Okay. So part of the concept with mulching is that you provide a filter for the water, so you're not gonna have the cloudiness, the runoff, because you have the texture and all the different materials that are decomposing at different rates. So essentially, you're creating this mat that can absorb tons of water, metric tons of water, massive volumes.
Assuming that it doesn't blow away in wind and whatever. I mean, it stays there.
Right. There's a process, so over time, it will all settle down, and it's a 25-year permit.
Could I get a little more clarification on that? Just to... Your name for the... I'm sorry, Jeannie McIntyre. Thank you. You say you're mulching, and that's gonna take care of the water?
That wasn't my worry.
What'd you say?
It acts as a filter.
It acts as a filter.
And it absorbs water.
And it absorbs water.
Right. Just like when you see mulch in your garden, it absorbs water and keeps everything moist.
Right. And how much mulch are we putting on?
We're not adding any mulch.
Maybe you could describe the process as we described earlier today.
Right, so the trees are cut mechanically, and then some of the smaller pieces are chipped, and the stumps are mulched. So the intent is to only remove from the property firewood-grade material or lumber. It doesn't seem like there's board lumber or, in any way, high-grade wood.
Okay.
So there will be some firewood brought off the mountain. The rest of it will be chipped and left in the soil to decompose, you know, in a compost kind of concept, so that that stays in the soil and builds the soil.
Okay. And that's more on the Kendall Farm side, correct?
Well, in the area of disturbance where we're gonna cut the trees and build the solar farm. Like within the fence.
Within the fence.
Within the fence. And obviously, there's a clearing to the outside of the fence, a setback.
And you don't expect any extra water to be running anywhere? You expect the mulch to take all the water, absorb it?
We're gonna follow the construction general plan and all the guidance. It's extensive, extensive guidance through A&R.
The Department of Environmental Conservation.
So this mulch will take the place of the roots that were sucking up water and putting it into the trees somehow, mysteriously, I guess.
I don't know how to answer that. It's a question.
Do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, I do. My name is Mary Ann Hayes. I think I'm pretty smart, but you just confused me, okay? Or I just got confused. So you said, what I heard, I'm not sure what you said. This is what I heard. What I heard was that you're gonna have that mulch, and it's gonna help, it's gonna absorb the water.
Yes.
And this gentleman asked, made a comment, and the comment was, "Well, that should place, that would take the place of the roots of the trees taking up the water into the tree." And you said you didn't know. Is that what I heard you say? Because that's kind of strange for someone who understands the process. It doesn't give me a warm and fuzzy feeling.
Okay. If you could ask me a direct question, I'd be happy to give you the correct answer.
The question is, how is the water gonna get absorbed?
It's just hard to sort of quantify what's being absorbed by the trees now and what... To say that they're equal, I represent...
I can only, I can only write one at a time. Okay. So, Josh?
Yes.
I got it. But this is the thing. If we don't have assurance, if we don't have a comfort level that this is going to be soaking up the water, somebody's property is gonna get, excuse my language, messed up.
Can I just respond quickly to that with Danny Shangala? So the Agency for Natural Resources and the Department of Environmental Conservation are state agencies that are charged with regulating and addressing just these issues. And so Bill spoke before about the fact that the project has received its construction general permit for all water and stormwater runoff issues associated with construction. The project does not require an operational stormwater permit, so I think to the extent that your concerns relate to stormwater runoff, the appropriate state regulatory agencies have also reviewed those issues as well.
Well, where are those reviews? Because there are some neighbors, people that live right here in the community that are really concerned about their property, and you're telling me, or I'm hearing, all these different agencies. Look, I'm very environmental. I want to have a green everywhere. So it's not like I'm against doing projects like these, but I'm hearing the people in the community I live in be really concerned about what's going on in the water and the sewage and the ruining of their property. And I'm hearing that it moves from this place to this place to this place to this place to this place, and I have to get a PhD to figure out all these different things. So maybe give me a flow chart so that I can understand where it goes, but something doesn't jive here for me. It just... We're speaking Chinese, Japanese, and Hebrew. It's just not the same. I'm not getting a warm and fuzzy feeling that this is something that you guys are really answering, and you're the attorney, so legally, you're telling me what to say and not to say. But I would say, if you guys want to be straight about it and really communicate, that would be great. Tell the truth. Let's look, see, tell the truth, take authentic action, and see what we need to do. If we can possibly have this to support the community, that would be great, but let's make sure that the community is being taken care of, and that's the concern that I have. And I'm not hearing a response to the people. I'm hearing a response. I mean, my...
Can I?
Yes.
I wanted to say two things. One is that just the fact that you've raised these questions and these issues tonight will be captured on our transcript, will become part of the record, and all participants in this proceeding will be looking at that information, and it'll generate questions to be asked during discovery during the proceeding. So this isn't a dead end for these concerns of yours? The other comment I wanted to make was, I think you might be right that we're speaking different languages across the board because sometimes when you're very close to an issue, you don't realize that what you're trying to convey isn't actually being conveyed. And something I... And something I heard earlier from Mr. Reagan was that the flush cut happens at ground level, the trees are cut off the ground level, and then they're ground below ground. And I think you were talking about that grinding process creates a mulch that stays there under the ground. It's not just.
For years.
Chips that are on top of the ground, so it's a much deeper level.
You're essentially building, so I really did hear you, and you have real concerns. And it just takes me a little while to hear what you said and then to form a response. It's very straightforward and honest.
Okay.
So that, what I was speaking to you before was cloudiness in your trout pond. So part of the idea is if the, if there's a filter, a natural organic filter of this built-up soil, it's relatively fluffy, and over time, as it settles down, the water will still move over the mountain. And the idea is that it will be filtered, so you won't have runoff. Water will always move.
Right.
Right, so we don't want to change how everything is settled and the water's clear and clean. We don't want to change that through the process.
You made the analogy, it's like mulch in your garden. I put mulch in my garden, but I have to put it in every year.
Right, that's.
Right, right.
But this is not going to be done every year. And you said water runoff, well, you know.
Well, there's clover being planted after it's all settled down. So imagine the panels are up, the fence is up, we're commissioned. And that following spring, it gets another plant in the clover, which always grows very low. And it's a legume, so it's going to be nitrogen fixing. It'll take available nutrients and make the nitrogen available to plants. So the concept is that the clover is the ground cover. But that doesn't happen on the first day. It doesn't happen when we cut. So essentially, we kind of started at the beginning telling the story about where are we now? We have a forest, we clearcut it in terms of flush cut, and then we grind the stumps. And then we have this open meadow, and it's looking a little rough, because we just cut all the trees, and that's what it looks like. And then the mulch will decay over time. But by the time that mulch turns back into soil and it's not recognizable, the clover would have grown up and have an incredible root mat, which also prevents erosion and its effect, the storm control. So when you have surges or snow melt or big runoff, that mat of root acts like a filter to help keep the water clean as it runs across the mountain.
Well, I don't know if it's shade-grown clover, because you're going to.
There's specific varieties, right. Yes, but you can understand what I'm saying, is that we build up that plant matter. We're not planting turf, we're not rolling off lawn grass, you know.
But what happens, what happens if your theory, because it's a theory, and you know, it may possibly true, but there's a percent of three or four that it may not happen that way. And people's properties get drenched and things go wrong there. What is their assurance that you guys are going to take care of those things?
The construction general permit is thousands of pages, and I agree with you. I don't have a PhD in hydrology.
So I need to hire an attorney to read the whole thing, to interpret the language? Because, you know.
It's very technical.
It is very technical, but so.
So it's not.
We're laypeople.
It's a general practice in the industry, is always evolving. So the solar world, the solar industry in general, has trends. So we're on the cutting edge of a new trend to use helicols to grind stumps, to leave them on the mountain, not to denude the landscape, turn it into a gravel parking lot, and then rebuild on some perfectly flat, symmetrical square. We're not doing that. We're leaving the landscape and the elevations as they are. We're trying to be as light touch as possible. Right now, this is the highest state of the art. We can't get any better at doing this than the plan that we look forward. It's the most thoughtful plan we could have done.
Brian?
Yes.
The root system on the clover is no match for the root system on the trees that are there. So even if you take the stumps down to ground, you mulch it, there's only a certain amount of water they're going to absorb. I know, I'm in the landscape. And the root system on the clover is no match for the amount of water that those trees would have soaked up. You are still going to have a surplus that's going to go down the hill, gravity, period.
Right, we have a construction general permit, and we have the state weighing in, basically. We're the ones telling us how it happens.
Well, we'll go over that with a fine-tooth comb, but I just want to make that point.
Sure.
That even though you say you're going to put down clover and this and that, and the mulch is going to absorb, there's a lot of water, and the root system is not a match for this tree.
I just, I do not have a PhD in hydrology and other water sciences, so I, I'm a loss.
I think the fact that Ms. Elias said earlier, there are several state agencies looking very carefully at this project.
Right, right.
And they will be scrutinizing. I just want to make the point that we all are clear that all the water is not going to be absorbed by clover. That's great, thank you. You're on the records. Like Fred O'Ben's, so. Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Yusheski.
Well, that's only because I'd sign my name second on the list. And I know that it was going to be given in order, I would have taken a different place.
Would you like to speak later?
Yes.
Okay, no problem. Next, I have Mr. Al Felder.
First of all, I'd like to thank all you folks for providing this forum and the work you have put into it, the work you'll probably put in it in the future. And I'm sure you're going to come up with a, I feel confident the board will come up with a just and proper decision, which is in the public good of everyone. I'm not against solar power, I think it's the thing to come. I'm for the environment, solar power is one of the ways to do this, but it's not for this area. And I break it down into two areas. One, environmental, which is something you folks on this board are very concerned with. And the second one is the economic impact of what's going to happen in this area, what could happen in the area. This is Vermont, and people come up here to look at beautiful trees and don't want to see, well, for instance, I was taking a drive the other day up to Burlington, and it was, it's not farms anymore, it's organizational solar farms. I realize this may not be seen from the road, but it could be. But I like to ski, not very well, as my two ski instructors here will test it, right, Mark?
Yeah, you're terrible.
And, and I don't know, when you're skiing and you're looking down at a bunch of solar panels, and people are got, and the economy in this area really depends upon skiing. And I just feel it's not Vermont with a bunch of solar panels. And I realize you folks on the board, and I may be wrong about this, and correct me if I'm wrong, you've never turned down a permit. And I'd like to change the mold.
I think you actually are wrong on that.
Oh, yeah.
But petitions, generally what happens, I think, is petitions are withdrawn, so you may not see.
What do?
Petitions are withdrawn when it looks like they won't.
Have many of them been withdrawn?
There have been a number, yes.
Well, good, we've got a shot. I'm glad to hear that. And I, one thing I'd like to note, and this is not to check on personal credit of anybody, but who the investors are, because if something has to be decommissioned, I'd like to know the folks who are doing, have to do the decommissioning can come up with the bucks to do it. This $50,000 bond, which the act goes to, I don't think even touches what you may have, but I'm no expert, you folks are. So if you wanted to divulge that, fine. If you don't, you know, you don't have to. But we just, I just feel better to know that it's being funded by people who are substantial and can take a hit if something goes wrong. But again, I know you're really interested in this environmental part, how it's going to affect birds, which, and I haven't seen a report on, from any Audubon committee yet as to what it's going to do to birds. I happen to like birds and skiing and things like that, that's why I am here in Vermont. But take into consideration this time, the economic impact of a steep tourist area on what it's going to change to, and how it will impact the lives of many people who depend upon this for a living. And again, I thank you for giving us this forum. I thank the people who are behind this project. I wish you all the luck in the world. But again, I'd like to break the mold.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jeanne McIntyre.
Yes, thank you. It's a pleasure meeting all of you today, making our little walk up in the woods. Sorry I couldn't make it all the way, but I have a lot of concerns being an adjacent property owner. And I've been concerned for quite a while, having lived there almost 28 years now. And I'm very connected with the environment, many of you know. I have issues about the water that's going to come when you clearcut so many acres of trees that have been absorbing water. There already is a significant amount of water just coming up out of the ground. It starts many of our little streams and tributaries that go down into the Windall River. I'm concerned that when you take down these trees and we get a good rain, or the spring the snow melts, our septic systems are going to get flooded. I don't think that's a minor consideration, not to mention any of our buildings or our homes, driveways. So the water is a big issue. As I said, clover's only going to absorb just so much, mulch is only going to get so much. I can tell you, I mulch my gardens, and there's still water, lots of water. And there's times on my driveway which meanders, I have ruts that are almost up to my knees. And happens I go out and start up the Bobcat and go back and put it all back together. Gleason Hill Farm Road, which abuts my property, is a big concern. It's pretty much, as you saw today, a straight shot from that one corner all the way down to Route 30. There's no meandering. Water is definitely going to go down there and flood out maybe my front yard, down in the garden center, and then overpower the culverts and the road. As it is some good times in the spring, we get water, it comes right down and goes over the road and causes a lot of problems. Vermont, was it BT, Betrons, has been out there to look at all of the ditches, which I have many culverts under the garden center to handle the water. I have developed a system from the top all the way down through my property of ponds and ditches and ways of dispersing some of the water so that it doesn't flood out from my property right into Route 30. It can't handle anymore. And about another seven to 10 days, and I'll take pictures for you, there will be such flooding coming down that hill and through those pipes that, I mean, it's enormous. It just goes crazy. It's very, very powerful. And if you add some more from up on top, it's going to create a lot of problems. So I'm worried about water, I'm worried about Gleason Hill Farm Road and people's, I guess, what they want to say, if they're right to use it and how to improve it. I don't, I'd like to challenge some of their authority on doing that with that road. It's not a public road any longer. Back November 14th, 1931, the town gave the road up, basically because cars were now becoming prevalent, and they weren't going to go up that road and over to Kendall Farm Road. It was fine when it was horse and wagon, but they didn't need it any longer. So I think, I want to find out more about what you know about who owns the road, because I've been doing research, and I think that you have some limitations on what you can do. I have concerns about the wind when you take down all those trees. The wind comes across there, and we've had a couple windy nights. It's only been 20 miles an hour, but it's pretty significant to start bending trees. And when you take down all those trees, my trees are going to come down. It's just the way it's going to be. I'm at about 1,500 feet elevation at my house. The top of the hill was, I think, 1,565. So that's another 35 feet coming down from the top down to my place. And as I said in the last meeting, once that water gets going, it's going to go like a striped-ass monkey right down that hill. And I think that we have to look at that pretty significantly. Noise, where, you know, you take down the trees, that's not going to be absorbing the sound. I don't want to hear it. I've been there for 28 years, I don't want to hear any more noise. I don't think they have the right to intrude on our life there. It's not like they're going to be insignificant, out of the way, nobody sees or hears or any consequences. There will be consequences, and I have concerns about that. I'd like to know how many panels are now going in compared to the first plan that you had? I think it was 7,000?
So May was when we made our application.
Yep, yep.
Solar panels were 300 watts apiece. Now they can be as large as 500 watts apiece.
Yep, but I want to know how many panels.
7,560.
Is that what we had before and we have now?
Yeah.
And did you say that they've now added on another 100?
No, I don't believe so.
I think we said that earlier, earlier. Yes, Bill said that earlier.
So the number was 7,600.
So now 7,660?
I believe it was 7,560, but.
It was before, but I think it's.
7,560 was the original number. So essentially, everything, numbers change. It's a work in progress. We have a lot of voices, we have a lot of agencies of jurisdiction, we have a lot of discussions with many people in each organization. I think so far, we probably have 110 voices or not 100 voices in this process, so far. So in that process, you know, I believe that the design right now, as it stands, is 7,560 panels, 330 watts each. But that may change. And our license goes up to 2.2 megawatts AC. So it's a class of permit, and it's an electrical rating.
Did you have a license that tells you how many panels you can have up to a certain amount?
I don't believe that's connected directly to the license, no.
Okay.
I believe it's that what's called the nameplate capacity of the system. So we are below 2.2 megs AC.
And who is your water expert?
Jeffrey Severson. And again, I just want to remind everyone that a copy of the petition's available here as well as at the petitioner's business site, and a lot of this information is contained there, and that's definitely the best place to go to, to refer to information about project design. And as Mr. Reagan pointed out, exact numbers can't be determined until the actual configuration is finalized. And so, you know, the petitioner is happy to answer questions about the design.
I'd just like to know what part of the criteria that are dependent on change, when you say that you won't know until you do it?
Well, so as Mr. Reagan pointed out, the project is seeking a permit for up to 2.2 megawatts AC capacity. And the exact configuration of that is outlined in the petition. If the petitioner were to substantially change their project design after they've received their certificate of public good. They would have to come back to the board and seek approval for that. So there are processes in place, and to the extent that the petitioner can answer questions now, they're happy to, but part of this will be developed through the process.
Okay. And how would you like to talk about the road issue?
Well, again, I would defer to the hearing officer on this, but to the extent any factual or evidentiary issues are coming up, I think the appropriate venue for those are in the 248 proceeding itself. It can be asked through discovery on the petitioner, and the petitioner will be happy to answer any questions through the discovery process, which you have filed motion to intervene in. So I think that would be the appropriate venue for that, but again, I'll turn, I'll defer to the hearing officer.
I think that's right, unless you have, you know, a more specific, limited question for the petitioner. Well, it's the, it has to do with rights of the road. My property is the old Gleason Farm. I have the House Foundation up there in the corner. And back when they were making roads, because I've been researching this downstairs in the records, that they wanted a road to go to Kendall Farm Road. So they asked the Gleason, can we use part of your road if we maintain it? And they took it over there. So that road was part of the Gleason Farm. What we have to find out is when it was given up, how is it stated? What we have to find out is when it was given up, how was it stated? And if they have reason to believe that they have a right to that road, we'd like to know about it because I don't, I don't see it in the, in the records.
Are you paying the taxes on that road?
I am paying the taxes on that road. I have been paying them for 28 years, according to the town clerk.
I think Ms. Rongala is absolutely right that this is more appropriate for the discovery process. But we will certainly make sure that that's included in our discussions. Thanks. Let's see. Next on the list is Mr. Merriman.
Oh, I don't think I have much. Actually, I have one interest. During our site visit, you explained, Mr. Reagan, about helically drilled, something very interesting. You also understand you drill a pilot hole to get those things into the.
Right, so a pilot hole is one clean hole where the drill bit goes in and the drill bit comes out and you've got a clean shot of a prescribed depth, could be seven feet, could be four, whatever the operator determines. And then there's different types of earth screws that are spun in. It's an attachment on a Bobcat. It's hydraulically driven. And just like a drywall screw, we used to use nails back in the day. And now we all have our cordless drill and basically you put it in the ground and then you can get the height perfect. You can get them in nice even rows. And then when we do the decommissioning, we come in and the process is reversed. So we unscrew in those screws and we're leaving no trace.
And so you go, you go into the rock, though?
Yes.
In, in every instance or?
Well, only, only when the rock in the soil, I mean, who knows?
Do you plug the hole afterward? I mean, especially in respect to the rock?
So the soil, I believe that in the decommissioning plan, it's very specific that the soil does fill in the holes in the rock after.
But you don't plug the, the rock?
I don't believe that we plug the rock.
Okay.
With grout or something like that, you mean?
Yeah.
We wouldn't want to insert anything manmade. I mean, the whole vision is to let the soil go back to where it was.
So the $50,000 would cover?
Again, just to interrupt, I, I do think that this might be another question that might be more appropriate in the discovery process rather than at the hearing.
I think you've gotten a basic.
Yes.
Answer to your basic question.
That's true.
And any further elaboration, I think, is not available for discovery.
Good enough. Got to get a little bit of discovery.
Okay. Would you like to go now? Your next speaker?
My turn.
The next.
Yeah. I only wanted to save my comment in case there was something that came up tonight that hadn't previously been known to me. And I think that the Public Service Board is in receipt of a letter that the Planning Commission wrote with respect to our comments on the project after conduct of the informational meeting, which Vermont Solar Farmers put on, at the invitation, at the request and invitation of the Planning Commission. And essentially, there are four points that were raised in the letter, suggestions essentially for, for the consideration of the Public Service Board, which had to do with, the first point we raised was there was some discussion with respect to access to the site and there was some discussion about installation of a gate at the Vermont Route 30 access point to restrict random motor vehicle traffic. There's some issues with respect to a gate that limit the rights of the people that have access or have rights to the road or to use the road. Adjacent, you know, bunny property owners further back than you and Jeanie and whoever basically have, would have rights on the road by virtue of owning land that the road used to access. And I don't know what, if any, conclusion has been drawn or made with respect to gate control access there. Because you're going to have to improve that first, I'm guessing, that, that first shot up the hill, 800 feet or whatever it is, to get to where your property actually is. At which point you would go onto your site and that would be controlled by the fence and the gate that you're going to be required to have there. There's no discussion with respect to a gate at the bottom of the hill. If there's going to be one or if it's even possible or permissible to have one there, depending on what the landlord would say, that have a right to use the road. The trail in this particular case.
Do you want a response now?
No, not necessarily.
Yeah, no, I'm aware of that and it is an open issue. It's really what makes sense.
Right.
Yeah, and we'd like to work with the community on figuring out the best.
Yeah, and I'm not, the Planning Commission doesn't have a point of view as to whether there should be or shouldn't be a gate. Our only concern is that the people that are going to be affected should have a say in what goes on at that point.
Any question?
Definitely.
And then the other thing was, there's the easterly boundary, which I believe abuts, Mrs. Joyce Amazin, gentleman, his name I don't remember. And then there's another property owner that also abuts on the easterly side. And we recommend that the buffer that's provided now be increased from the 25 feet that is, you know, would be a setback buffer or whatever, to 50 feet. And we'd like it to remain vegetated as opposed to cleared. So that will actually provide a buffer visually.
Quickly to that one myself, there should be a 50 foot buffer. And I believe that's actually what is designed now on the planet.
Well, the plan, if the plan has changed since the last one I saw, I would defer to the new plan. I mean, that's fine.
And Mr. Tataro did contact me and what we discussed was if the fence is visible from his house, we would certainly do some additional screening because the native vegetation, which is the idea, is a little rough and.
Spars.
Yeah.
The, there was some confusion at the informational meeting with respect to the inverter transformer that was, I don't know if it was one inverter or one transformer. I'm not really sure the numbers of stuff. But probably the transformer that makes, would have the potential to make noise.
So we've done an extensive acoustical, you know, consultant has done a very thorough report.
Right.
On all of those issues.
And you're going to build the housing or something? Is that the answer to that or?
Basically, the concept is that the actual inverters that turn the DC power as solar panels make are spread out through the field. So when they come back to one transformer, that transformer has a rating, a sound rating under given circumstances and that's overlaid with the survey map as a layer so that that can be calculated as to the noise and the impact of the neighbors. And there's extensive regulation through the state, existing regulation.
Well, our comment was that anything inverter transformer that has a potential to emit noise should be housed in something to further mitigate whatever is permissible from the state.
The state has been steering us in general away from structures.
Well, I'm talking about like, like, you know.
Like a shed or?
No, not, not a shed necessarily, but.
Plantings?
No, well, that could work, I suppose. But if you have an emergency generator, for example, it's usually housed in some type of a baffle that mitigates the noise that would otherwise be present if it wasn't baffled or housed in a baffle.
Oh, like a cabinet type thing?
Yeah.
Yeah. We can, we're hearing what you're saying.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll look into some kind of clear answer so you can understand what's going on there.
Right. And I mean, I think that, you know, so that's something that should be given consideration by somebody, basically.
Absolutely. It's covered. It's a very thorough process.
And I think the last point that we raised in our letter, and I'll read it, is that the petitioner should be required to continue to work with the above us to mitigate the potential harm from water runoff onto adjacent properties from the construction of the access road and the mounting system for the panels that are going to serve the project. I think that that's probably something that's ongoing. I'm not sure if any resolutions exist. But to some extent, I share the concern over potential water from, or the channel that you provide by constructing the road to access that point as to whether that would run off. Now, I didn't go to the site visit, but I walked up there independently some months ago in the fall, actually, when we were first looking at it. And my, my personal concern, not, nothing to do with the Planning Commission, is just that this lay of land is that it slopes essentially away from, access road comes to a point.
Straight shot.
And then it drops off the other side. So whatever goes on on the site is not likely to make it back down the access road. It's going to go a different direction. I'm not sure where it's going to go, but it's not likely to go down the access road.
Right, there's extensive long trail designs in the transition from the existing road to the marker tree or the stone mall and where that terrace begins, which is where our loading landing zone would be.
Right.
Where that terrace is.
It slopes off the other way.
Right, and that transition has been engineered to separate.
The buffer that's presented on the, on the north side, along where Gleason Road ran after it makes that sharp bend when you get to the top of the hill.
Right.
You haven't changed the, the nature of that buffer. It's still like 80 to 120 feet. You're cutting off on a little angle.
Correct.
Amongst you, you can work them out.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
One last quick question. So I've heard about this general construction permit. Is that what you call it exactly or?
Construction general permit.
Construction general, okay. Was that permit in any way based on the A and R report? Was that part of the, getting the?
I, I believe you're referencing a letter that's attached as an exhibit in the petition. Is that what you're referring to when you say the A and R report?
I'm assuming that.
I think that might be, yeah, because A and R has not provided any prefiled testimony or exhibits yet in this document.
So are there opinion letter, opinion letter?
Yeah, so there are different divisions within the Department of Environmental Conservation.
So was that in any way part of the construction general, general, whatever you call that thing?
Construction general, we, we can't speak to what, what the agency reviewed. There are different departments. Jeanie, I don't know if you have more insight on that, but we can't really speak to that.
That would be a question for Judith Dillon, who's representing A and R in this.
Judith Dillon?
That's the lawyer from the Agency of Natural Resources.
We do take all the comments seriously and the concerns, you know, we are here to listen and try to, you know, understand what those concerns are.
And then one, one final one. Would then Vermont Solar Farmers be willing in any way to put up some sort of escrowed amount of money to protect against these, albeit low probability disastrous events?
Yeah, we certainly talk about it, but it is a part of the, the process. And there's, there certainly is a fairly significant asset value in the project and there, Vermont Solar Farmers has every reason, very compelling reasons, to keep the neighbors as happy as possible, the town as happy as possible, and not to infringe with runoff or noise or any other.
Nothing more compelling than a little escrow.
You know, I'm a member of this community and so I, I have every intention in making sure that this project, you know, doesn't affect everybody. You know, I mean, I want to live here. I plan on living here. I'm starting a family. I've got a baby due in a couple of weeks and I'm going to be here a long time. So I really, you know, I feel like we've crossed, you know, and, and got everybody involved as we could to make sure that, you know, we didn't have any adverse effects.
I have a general question. When the board puts out these pre-filing testimonies that I was able to pick up online, that's all testimony from the side of the developers. Do, do people who are opposing this have the right to bring in their experts to give testimony also?
As was mentioned earlier, those who have been granted a motion to intervene and participate as formal parties in the case. And yes, there will be opportunity for other parties to present, to file testimony. And that's on the flip side of the handout that was.
I see.
Earlier tonight.
Well, good, because I just want, want you to be influenced by one side.
Absolutely not.
And I'm sure you will.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much. This has been very, very helpful, I think, for myself and for the other parties involved in this proceeding. If there are no other comments then, we will call it a night and adjourn. Thank you very much.
Thank you.